Madam Mayor? The mics are live. Ma'am? I can't see, can I use your agenda? She didn't, only wish to do it now. Turn them on.
Good evening? Can you guys hear me? No?
Okay, I just turned your mic up, try again, Madam Mayor.
Good evening?
Is that better?
It's on. Is this better? No? Someone from the IT department should be watching, no, there, sorry, can't assist, um, but trying to get the microphones to be louder. In the interim, I'll just project my voice. Thank you all for joining us this afternoon for this special meeting. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll call?
Mayor Gore?
Here.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Here.
Counselor Randolph?
Here.
Counselor Holloway?
Here.
Counselor Parton?
Here.
Counselor Denton?
Here.
Counselor Pelham?
Here.
Present.
Thank you. The first item on tonight's agenda is to, a motion to go in closed session, would anyone like to make that motion?
I make the motion that we move to go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two dash three, seven, eleven, fi- excuse me, A seven, and A eight, to consult with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice and be briefed by staff members pertaining to probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body.
Is there any discussion? There are no lights. Um, Vice Mayor Bennett? Roll call, please.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Counselor Parton?
Yes.
Mayor Gore?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Pelham?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Counselor Randolph?
Guess we'll go into the back for our closed session discussion and we'll reconvene shortly.
Yes ma'am? Ma'am? That big book?
Mute when it's ready.
Wait a minute. Yes ma'am? I would have appreciated the joke. See, she was supposed to remind me to put my color back on my lips, did she? And, listen, you didn't want to work in my office. I have to have lips on the dais. If they don't get this thing back on, we both gonna be dead. Nobody. Yeah, but they were down there.
I don't know what they're doing, I just curious where.
Um, that was, um, control, and then we came in. See, that's why I said we're gonna have to stop. Pe- people are, we cannot have people in here the day of the meeting because we can't have stuff like this. Why do you keep hitting mute all night?
Because sometimes it gets turned off, I'm trying to see if that's the reason why it's messed up. And see, now it's not even.
What did you do? You're, you're breaking.
It wasn't anything, it was broken before I touched it.
I think it was broke 'cause you touched it, see? Unmute all mics. Touching my phone. I think he likes fried eggs because they resemble his own.
They weren't that good. They weren't that good.
You said they were delicious.
Nothing's really coming on now.
Uh oh, what'd you do, ma'am? No, turn this off.
Can you guys hear us?
I'm not touching it? Okay, but we have to turn them off. We don't have to have all the counselors talking about my mic. It does? See, now I'm conscious. I could show you some. You will not sing? You can't sing because you can't sing. You cannot sing. You ain't made no album, why you be lying? It doesn't count if you're fired. What? Why not just say this? Apparently.
Does it back?
That one's on. People, what? Nobody touched it. Oh. They need a special because they're smiling, aren't they? Testing one, two.
Of course.
One, two, one, two. Did you pull?
I did pull it out.
Testing, one, two. What happened? Wait. Okay. That's good. Okay, mine's still on. Me too, you might.
Yeah, I need to check one first, make sure it works.
Because it was a lot.
Like this port and diet or something.
Three, that's not working?
No, just, this one, this one.
Um, she didn't just, was it, she went all the way to? Are these new? Testing one, two.
It's got a C in it somewhere.
Yeah, but then my sister didn't work for her, but they put in a pacers and that took care of it. She was just doing something, leaving it on her, I thought, what are you doing? Wow, you look great. You got a different style, different color? No, I put on sheer because someone did not remind me of my lips. Yeah, but she ain't crying, boy. Nothing? Can she really sing or she not? Like, really well? Eastern country? Cause in the country, it's not very, old, not that new crap. Okay, I did not say, I did not say heaven and the remake of, um, Believe with him and Brooks and Brown stopped me. And then you see him. Well, he just got marred. Wow, but, but, but you, but, but you look so, and your hair's so pretty. Was it bad? It's a must, really good. What happened to you? With all the things you've asked me? How did you? You're long, I mean, you're long.
Look at that, buy out that one over to the far left, mine is that not?
He had to cut it because that's very damn. And that's the cut? Yes, exactly, exactly, so he said it'll be. You, you're lucky it didn't frack, considering that. Oh, well, just. Just put conditioner, put conditioner on it and put a bag around your head while you're walking around.
You just gotta talk first.
Hello?
I'm trying to hear.
Testing? Testing?
Mr. Alvin?
Yes ma'am.
Can you speak into your mic, please?
Yes ma'am.
Ms., um, City Attorney, the motion that we're gonna do that go under SB four? That would be under SB four? Do you want to come out of closed session first and do it? Thank you all for your patience and waiting for us to discuss the item in closed session. Madam Clerk, can you please bring us out of closed session?
Where only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and identified in the closed meeting motion discussed in closed meeting? Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Counselor Parton?
Yes.
Mayor Gore?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Pelham?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Counselor Randolph?
Yes.
Thank you, before we move on to open the regular, well, special meeting, Counsel Parton, you have a motion you would like to make?
Yes. I move that we authorize an offer letter and the city manager and the city attorney to perform all such acts necessary to acquire parcels of land necessary for the Riverwalk Phase Two project, including the filing of pleadings to effectuate condemnation.
Second. Is there any discussion? There are no lights, roll call, please.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Counselor Parton?
Yes.
Mayor Gore?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Pelham?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Counselor Randolph?
Yes.
Motion passes seven up.
Thank you. We're gonna move into our special meeting at this point. Um, Counsel Randolph called this meeting, so I will turn the floor over to her, from my understanding, one of the topics that we're gonna be discussing tonight is borrowing someone from public property. So, I just wanna make sure that we're all on the same page of what your intentions are and what you would like for us to discuss, to make sure that I can help, make sure the meeting is in track and that we don't stray from what your intentions are. So, without further ado, I'm going to throw it over to you.
And, um, that is correct, there have been recent communications to council as a body from the Commissioner of Revenue concerning, uh, department members from another department where eh, a banning of that, a, a person to the Commissioner's office. And as a city body, I wanted to make sure what is, uh, uh, put on the city is liability for that purpose. So, I'll ask that the city attorney, please talk to us with that respect in mind.
Okay, th- can everyone hear me?
No.
Alright, so, um, can you hear me now? Alright, um, thank you, um, Madam Mayor and Council. Alright, um, thank you, um, Madam Mayor and Council. Um, I was asked to do some research as to whether a, an entity other than the city council or the city was authorized by law to ban an individual who is rightfully on city property from city property. And the results of my uh, research probably is probably known to you that only the owner of property is authorized to ban eh, an individual from property. Um, on occasion, that authority can be delegated to another, a licensee or someone who's renting. In this instance, the question then became whether or not the city had granted the Commissioner of the Revenue authority to ban uh, an individual from city property. And based on the city records as they are currently reflected, there has been no authority that's been conferred on the commissioner to do that. And so eh, in, in the broad term, only the city council can authorize such banning. And as of this moment, the city council has not vested that authority in another entity.
And so based on that, um, the letter that council received as a body, we should then respond to that, or at least uh, you have responded to it based upon the legality of that as being an issue.
Um, yes, I, well, there, there was a couple of questions there. So I have informally responded to the letter. And, and that response was constituted by in-person, an in-person meeting with the Commissioner of the Revenue. And I suggested sort of the outcome that I'm sharing with you today. A formal response has not been issued. And so I think that can only be authorized by city council as well. So um, I'll just take my cue or my directions from this, this body tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Randolph. Are you complete with providing the opening for the meeting so we can have the clear expectations? What do you wanna discuss tonight so we can move into the S B items?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Do you need a motion for the, oh. So do you need a motion for the formal uh, notification?
Um, I would prefer that um, Madam Counselor, as well as any directives uh, in terms of whether such authority should be conferred or given after tonight's meeting. I, I certainly am prepared to officially respond, but other than simply saying that, you know, the city council has to be the body to authorize the banning, I would want a, a motion from the council for me to go further than that.
So I do in fact, so I would move that the only uh, entity that will be able to ban anyone or bar people from city property would be in fact, the city council. That would be my motion. Does it need to be any more detail?
Uh, no, Madam Counselor, it does not.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Is there any discussion at this time? I do not see any lights. Okay, Counselor Parton hits light and then Counselor Denton.
So my question, um, Mrs. Robinson would be if we have, and this goes for any constitutional officer and any department director that, you know, has an office that they manage. If they feel that anyone, whether it's a city employee or a resident is coming in and either harassing them, um, being belligerent or um, being threatening to them, then what type of recourse do they have in order to make sure that not only are their employees safe, but the people that are, you know, other citizens that are in the office at that time are also safe?
Sure. And that's a great question, Counselor uh, Parton. What makes your question a little bit more difficult to answer directly is that you did not point to any action by an individual that um, put someone's life in uh, jeopardy or threaten their safety. The words you used were if they came in uh, uttering words that were harassing, uh, belligerent and threatening. So that is a very subjective standard.
Okay.
And, you know, uh, we're all in government, so at some point, we, we should expect that some of the, the language will actually kinda cross over from something that you think is appropriate to maybe inappropriate, but it falls within that individual's First Amendment rights uh, to actually utter. And so it becomes a very fact-driven determination when you're talking about words. So in, in terms of just responding to threatening language, what's threatening to you may not be threatening to me. What's belligerent to you may not be belligerent to me. So you want to stay away from s- subjective standards because those can be discriminatory applied.
Okay.
So the key would be whether there has been any action that leads someone to really reasonably conclude that their safety is at risk. And I say this, uh, understanding the difficulty that it may, you know, that might exist for a director or someone, if they're dealing with someone who is ex- uh, you know, exhibiting unruly behavior. But again, you know, the, simply because you don't like their behavior, um, you know, eh, that's another consideration. What you do again, on your private property may be different than what we should be doing with public property. As a general umbrella, you should understand that unless, yeah, strike the word unless, but if someone is on city property to conduct business, um, the state law does not really readily authorize a locality from banning a, a resident from a public building. So the standards are quite high. So it's clear to me that at least something has to be in place in terms of at least communicating the standard. And then as sort of facts present themselves, you may have to address them differently. So we start out with the general rule and then as things occur that may require us to revisit the general rule, we just kinda work from that. Uh, I hope that's responsive.
Yeah, so with the general rule, can we have some language in there that talks about putting someone's life in danger? I mean, I think that that's something that's, you know, pretty easy to determine.
Sure, I, I, you know, and then I, I would say that maybe the, eh, it can be as detailed as you want it. So the question presented was can the motion as it was stated by Counselor Part, um, excuse me, Pellum be as, as, as broad as she stated it? And the answer to that question is yes. If you want to further tailor it, you can do that. But the considerations I simply ask you to, to make are those that are sort of imposed on us by other um, provisions of law, including the Constitution.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Denton had her light on, then Vice Mayor Bennett?
Counselor Parton, can I ask the same question? But what, if we pass this motion tonight and heaven forbid, something should develop, are, would the city be in a predic- be in a precarious situation? Because we did not, we just said, we did a broad statement and we really didn't address maybe what the problems could be. I don't know if I'm explaining that well enough, but I just don't want we ignore or don't fine tune it enough that if something should happen, it puts the city at risk.
Madam Mayor, may I respond?
I do have a question, just to keep track of who spoke. Counselor Randolph, she did an open statement, said it doesn't count, turned her two times. Counselor Parton spoke once and then Counselor Denton, you're speaking, speaking once right now, correct?
Yeah, yes.
And so just to clarify your question one more time, cause I was a little confused about what you were specifically asking her to address. Can you just restate your question for clarity?
Yeah, I, I, I understand.
You understand, come here, go.
The challenge is that's, right now, nothing's in place. Okay, so there are risks for, that result from having nothing in place. And there may be risks that result from having something in place. Now, if we take no action, if the city council takes no action tonight, what we have in place is a document that indicated that if an individual entered into the commissioner's office, that person risked, uh, risked being charged with trespassing. Um, that, that is an, a possible result if we do nothing. Um, so the question is how, how do you manage that in terms of the city? I don't think the city, uh, as, as a proposition risks any immediate liability from taking, making this simple declaratory statement because it really just is reflected in law. It just is communicated now to the public. Um, eh, we may, if you decide to tailor it more than what Counselor Pellum suggested in her motion, that may cause us some difficulty, but we could look at something as a stopgap measure. I.e., you pass something tonight, you make this sort of edict by motion tonight, and then you ask my office or me to present something that's more detailed and nuanced in the form of a resolution for your next regular meeting, which is August twenty. And then you, you, we can meet it out a little bit more. But I don't think that there is a clear sort of liability-free road based on the current situation. But I don't think that the risk is very high either way. But certainly for the individual who is uh, threatened with a cr- a criminal charge, uh, I think there is a greater risk that something will happen to a resident if we don't do anything as opposed to um, doing something. If, that answers your question, Madam?
Vice Mayor had her light on and then Counselor Pellum, but I do have one question just because Counselor Denton, I was a little confused about what you were asking, but her response clarified it for me. So then my question would be kinda to what she was asking. If there's an emergency situation with anyone in general with the public, clearly the police can respond with their legal rights to remedy the situation. So this wouldn't impact um, any other emergency situation, correct? Cause when you asked, I thought you was asking overall, but I think you were asking specific to that office. But it makes me question, overall, the police can necessarily do their jobs, correct?
Well, certainly if there's a, a crime being committed, they have authority under other sections of the law to address that. We're talking very narrowly about banning to set up a trespass charge. Okay, so that's, that's a very narrow thing. It doesn't mean that people can come on city property and commit crimes as a, a result of being alleged, alleged another crime, they can be escorted off the property. But again, we're talking about who has the authority to say, you are forbidden to come on this property and then use that as a condition for a trespass charge?
Thank you. Vice Mayor Bennett, Counselor Pellum?
I guess the um, issue that really bothers me is that, do we have a process? A workplace safety process? So, you know, instead of going to strict, such extreme measures, do we have a mediator? Is there someone you can take your, your issue to prior to you determining that you don't want someone here or, you know, because like you said, uh, Madam City Attorney, communication, we all speak English, but we all understand it differently. And there could be a miscommunication, but uh, we all have to work together. We all work here for the citizens and we need to learn to get along. So with that being said, I would like to ask or request if there is a process for workplace safety, if there is a, if someone feels like there's imminent threat to their life, if there's someone that they can go to um, and discuss that and they can have a mediator if they see, and that person, that point of contact can determine whether or not this is eh, the, the employee is in imminent danger. So what I'm hearing is you want us to, you want us to um, approve something and we just don't, we don't have all the information or the facts. We only hear certain things, but we want one person, one point of contact person tell us, these are the facts, this was laid out. This is all the information that was brought to me so that the council can make a decision, not on one side or the other side. So.
And I'll just ask the city attorney one question in regards to the agenda because I was just notified. S B two is discussion of workplace safety. Is that question that the vice mayor asked right now permissible at this point in the conversation? Or do you wanna table that until we get to S B two? Was that a proper way to handle that?
I, I think the notice allows for some flow between the subject matters. I think the way it's just been broken out by on, on the agenda is the preference of court, I think, maybe.
I'm fine with it. Um, who, who are you directing your question to? Is it the city attorney or Counselor Randolph?
Uh, would like to discuss that with the city attorney. And if Counselor Randolph would agree with that, I mean, if she agrees with that or she doesn't. And, I mean, I just believe that there should be a process and that's it.
I, I think you're, eh, I think there's a blurring of the issues. Okay, so I'm, I'm looking at this purely in the context of a trespass charge. Who can, who can ban, you know, and set up a trespass charge? All of these other issues about, you know, someone fearing of imminent danger, there are separate provisions in law to address those. If someone feels like they're in imminent danger, mediation is gonna take too long. So the key would be to run over to the courthouse and get yourself a protective order. That's just one of the options. If you felt your life in imminent danger. I can't speak to any kind of works, uh, workplace safety. I, I don't know of any, they may be in place. I simply don't know that. But again, I don't think I have to go there to deal with this very narrow question as to the legality of the, the ban that was issued.
The ban that was spoken, not issued, right?
Well, it's, eh, you know, I, it's been reduced to writing. I don't know if it was, it was conveyed in writing, but it, that's really at this point, uh, it's, it's not a, it's not definitive or, you know, my opinion is not tied to whether it was put in writing or it was uttered. We know that it was conveyed to us in writing. And so it was based on that writing that these, you know, this process has been put into place for us to be here. But, you know, the legal requirement would have to be met regardless, but again, you're still asking, you have to ask yourself like, does that person have the authority to do it? And, and again, with all due respect to Madam Vice Mayor, I'm not trying to cut you short on this, but my purview on this has been fairly narrow.
I see, thank you.
Well, the point given when you, you indicated earlier that uh, you had to be owner of a property to offer trespassing, is that correct?
Owner or be a licensee and you through, through that, some things roll over to you as, as a part of the law, but.
Well, so I'm saying can a guest in my house file trespassing charges on my property?
No.
Okay.
No, unless, unless you have given them authority to do that.
So to me, that equates to this situation where the commissioners are guests in the house of the city hall. So I can't see anyone having that authority other than the elected officials that all the citizens have voted in. Um, so you can't segregate the one office and empower them to do um, trespassing charges on anyone, in my opinion, um, as a guest of city hall. Just, and the guest meaning they're here just to serve our citizens just like everybody else does. So one can't do the other. And so it was really inappropriate to talk about something being, to me, illegal, nothing is illegal. I mean, for someone to speak to someone in a hall, in a way, but anyway, um, being a guest, no authority provided to ban people, it's invalid, in my opinion. So my motion stands, uh, and if no more discussion, I call for questions. And if no more discussion, I call for questions.
There's an emotion for to end debate. I have a question for procedure, Mr. Kalos. Said that we have to get a second and vote on the end discussion and sometimes it was once you said it, you just end the discussion, so what is, okay, once you say you end discussion. So now the motion on the floor is her original motion on the floor, the first one that she made, cause discussion is ended, correct? Discussion is ended now, correct?
No one objected to calling the question.
So can you please read the motion again, madam clerk, and proceed with roll call?
The motion as I have it is that only city council can ban someone from the municipal building.
And it was seconded by vice.
It was seconded by councillor Holloway.
Councillor Holloway, sorry, roll call please.
Councillor Holloway.
Yes.
Councillor Parton.
No.
Mayor Gore.
Yes.
Councillor Denton.
No.
Councillor Pelham.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Councillor Randolph.
No.
Motion passes four three.
So we'll move into the actual special medium items, again, I'll try to get to SB one. The title is offices of treasurer and the commissioner of revenue, um the issue is to this. No, you just did a motion to to give director, give her the answer, we didn't even get to that part.
Now that's what my motion was about.
We didn't get to answer the topic, cause you put your motion up before I we even got to it. So. The issue. You had to get permission to go to the attorney.
Mm-hmm, I'm asking for your permission.
What is your question?
The question is, uh why would we talk about two personnel issues of two offices? When they not our personnel?
Okay, madam attorney, can you answer that, please? If you can answer it.
Well, the agenda item says to to discuss or take action regarding recent events involving these two offices. These two offices referring to the treasurer and the commissioner of the revenue. Uh other than looking at the agenda, um I mean, we don't have authority to. The city council doesn't have authority to exercise over personnel, but. If it's just a question of discussing, I'm not really sure if that's where the discussion was gonna go, but the discussion can ensue. There just wouldn't be any authority to do anything on the back end of the discussion.
So we can talk about personnel in these offices?
If if.
If we don't, and they don't, we don't, they don't work for the city at all? That sounds you contradicting yourself, I'm sorry.
No, the agenda item is it's this, it's as broadly as it's stated, so I don't know. As it was teed up originally, we started talking about trespass, and it was a very narrow discussion on trespass. Um that that discussion did not come out of addressing this issue because now we're at this issue according to the mayor. And there's something obviously to be discussed, I don't know what it is, but the question now is can we talk about personnel?
Okay.
That discussion is not precluded based on how the um issue is framed on the agenda. Now, a- again, on the back end of it, you can't take any action that has any kind of legal significance or legal teeth. Because you don't have that, but you have published what you want to talk about, this can fall within that broad topic. And then if at the end of this, the question is, do we have the legal authority to take this specific action? I can answer that question, but right now, if if the conversation drifts to personnel. Then I, you know, I can't say it's the discussion is precluded.
To take action against recent events involving these offices, it involved trespassing, we said no one can. That's to me, the motion that we just did answered that question, that one office cannot take action over another. To ban someone from the office, so that's, I thought that was the issue at hand, not the conversation.
Right, I I I I understand that you say, well, you, how I'm understanding your your statement. Um madam councillor is that, well, since we have already taken action on one item. Over which the city council has authority, what else do we need to do or can we do relative to this discussion? It is a little premature based on the fact that no discussion has really ensued beyond that trespass point. You've offered the personnel angle, and all I can say is you don't have any authority over the personnel. But it doesn't preclude you're discussing things, it just makes that conversation maybe irrelevant. But you can discuss it, if 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 it pleases the council.
Can you answer your question?
Yes, thank you ma'am.
Um councillor Randolph, I see you have your light on, is it okay for me to just tee up the issue and give it back? So SB one offices treasurer and commissioner of revenue, issue to discuss and or take action regarding recent events including the two offices. I'm gonna pass it off to councillor Randolph to do an introduction and give remind council. That you're limited to two times ten minutes max on to talk about any particular item on the agenda and to please hit your lights.
Madam mayor, may I ask a question? Because from over here, y'all really were talking about it, so I've been, so I'm restarting the time now? Cause I've been timing.
That was on the motion that she made, discussion can happen after a motion, so the the ten minute goes after a motion. But these are discussion items, so they give ten minutes for each discussion item too.
Okay, so it's gonna start back over because we're now just talking about SB one separately from the trespass issue, I just for clarity.
I see attorney to interject, from my understanding, when I was trying to go into SB one.
Yes.
Councillor Pelham made a motion, since there's a motion on the floor and it's discussion to take action, everyone got two minutes to speak. Meant two times to speak at a max of ten minutes, this is a new item, so their ten minutes re- is for each uh for each individual item, am I correct?
You could have treated that discussion as your first discussion item, so I'll just, I'll defer to the chairs to how she wants to handle it.
We can do that then because it is, since there seems to be confusion about it, we can treat that, cause that is the action that we're here to discuss. So, I think we'll want to SB two?
No.
Um can we just?
I'll let you say what you have to say, but can I limit that after this to move on to SB two, cause the topics that we talked about was under SB one?
I would respectfully refer or could defer to councillor Randolph since she has sort of a clearer understanding as to how she wanted.
Wants to do it?
The meeting discussion items to go.
I'm gonna pass it off to you, and if you want to end this, we can end it, we can move on to SB two, okay?
We're definitely gonna move on in a minute, but. Uh the first thing that I wanted to happen in this meeting was to find out where the city stood in liability for what had we had been given by the commissioner of revenue. Whether that put the city into a liability situation first and foremost, that's what I care about, is whether the city is in a liability situation. I had hoped that, and we won't get into personnel issues because we don't need to, nor are we authorized to. But what I would like to do is to state that I had hoped that the two departments who need to work together for the the. Full uh revenue and and generation and our cafres, which are important to us. Uh would have worked this out, uh I don't know if they have or not, but what I'd like to do is make a motion. And I hope this is in support of what uh councillor Pelham asked for earlier. Is that as a governing body, we can ask for an internal audit for helping the treasurer's office. To uh get to where uh they need to be if they are not there. In doing so, that helps us to uh assure that the two departments will not go back and forth. Where one thinks one's doing something right or wrong versus vice versa. Will have it all set up so that it's appropriate. We have a uh department that is um has gone through a ra- a rather tough time. With real estate assessments, has um uh from the treasurer's own words. Had some potential sabotage, uh whatever that means, and we don't, you know, I haven't talked to her about that, so I can't say what that means, nor would I speak for her. And we also have uh uh some other issues where staff turnover has left that office with. Uh you know, a need for all of the new employees to be trained. So uh as a governing body, we can call for a an operational uh audit. To help get uh them where they need to be if they're not, or to make sure that uh the treasurer is comfortable. And her staff are comfortable with where they are, so I'd like to make a motion that uh the council uh look at having. An operational audit be done for that department to get them um. Training or and whatever else they need with their system and uh whatever else uh comes across as something that we can. Uh get them help to do.
I'll second it.
We have discussion and as before we move on to discussion, I see councillor Pelham has your light on, before we open that door. I'm sure you've done your research, but I'm just asking for the public, um is that something that we can do for a constitutional office, that permissible?
Um yes, you can investigate offices, uh any office or agency of the city.
Me, okay, that's great, I'm glad you mentioned the word audit, I love it.
Yep.
But I like to have a substitute order, not just an audit of the treasurer, treasurer been in office for eighteen months. Problems started long before she got here, long before she got here, as our cafres have indicated. From fifteen and we'll find out sixteen and seventeen as well. So my substitute motion would be not only to do to do an audit for this entire city, a forensic audit by department. So that we know all the uh uh all the hidden numbers and all the was under the carpet and. Thrown in the river or wherever it is, but uh the treasurer presently has been, is young here, so. The fifth they have along, we had a uh treasurer's department, I don't even know, but that's my substitute motion to have a. Forensic audit done by department, whether it's easier to do it by department, we gonna pay for something, we gonna pay for the whole. I would say watermelon with the seeds inside.
So can you clarify your motions, I don't want to put watermelon in the motion.
For forensic, I like watermelon, but for our our substitute motion is to do a forensic audit for this whole city. Department by department or totally at one time, it doesn't matter with me.
Second, is there any discussion?
So my question.
Councillor Parton, you didn't hit your light, does anyone else have their, need to have to speak, councillor Pelham, you're hitting your light. Councillor Parton, then councillor Randolph.
Uh this question's for Mr. Altman and this might be, it end up being a Mr. Terry question. But what's the difference between a caffra which is an overall audit for the city of Hopewell? And an actual forensic audit of Hopewell?
So, excuse me, the overall caffra audit that we do every year, audits all of our accounts. Uh all of it, reckon, again, audits all of departments that receive the funds in, so the treasurer's office, schools and the city. We can include this treasurer's office and all the others offices as part of the city, so it audits the city and schools expenditure, receipt and expenditure of funds during that year. Forensics audit is gonna get a little bit deeper, typically, uh they're conducted when there's some concern with uh illegal activity. And generally are uh rather in depth and thorough, but rather costly. So, uh I don't know of any instance when in our, which council's been produced, presented the fifteen and sixteen audit. And you'll have seventeen coming on Thursday, where we have seen any indication from the auditors. Where there has been any illegal activity that potentially would warrant a forensic audit, but. That's that would, the forensic audit, which there was one done in our neighboring community, uh quite a bit of money was spent. Uh only identify a very small amount of money that may have been misappropriated, but there was one conducted. We still have to outside of that, continue to get our audits done, so we can get them completed. My only concern is how that would then affect our ability to get eighteen nineteen completed, so we could be current. With our, just our finances in general, while that would be conducted and what that cost might be to the city.
Okay. I think Mr. Robinson wanted to say something.
Um just for point of clarification, and this is to councillor Randolph. I assumed and I treated her use of the word audit as a request for an investigation. So it is audit that you have actually sought, so the statute re- authorizes the city council to. Conduct investigations of the departments, not necessarily an audit of of the treasurer. So I I'm I'm focusing focusing in on that term investigation. As a, based on how you postured it, which the references to staff and things of those thing, that nature. Which doesn't necessarily go with a financial audit.
And if you do one, you gonna do the other.
Hold on, councillor Pelham, it was the, if you comment now, that would be your second time. Councillor Randolph had the floor next, well, are you finished?
Yeah, I'm finished.
Yeah, I and I understand what you're saying, that the um state statute that allows a governing body to come in. Is for investigation is what you're telling us, and. I didn't want this to be a negative connotation because I'm not looking for an investigation so much as I am looking for assistance. Because there has been um the issues with the real estate taxes and then with the sabotage. Uh wording and then uh staff turnover and um now we've got a a the bond payment being like.
Point of order, yeah, thank you, what's your, what's your point of order?
My point of order is we're veering away from.
And I'm trying to explain to her.
How do I, councillor Randolph?
Yes, so we're veering away from exactly what your um this item is, so. I mean, it, those are all, to me accusations right now, because I don't know the facts, so.
What are accusations?
Well, what's going on in the treasurer's office, I don't know the facts, I'm only hearing what you're saying, that there's issues and.
I'm just repeating what's what's already been proven, I'm just trying to get help.
Right, but we're still, that's still my point of order, we need to stick to what is on the agenda rather than veer off.
And that is part of the agenda.
Can can I please interject now, as the attorney? I see the point that you're making in terms of the comments um pertaining to the item on the agenda. My only ask is observation, I'll ask the city attorney to correct me if I'm wrong, um I think your comments, you're fine except for um. I guess repeating or restating what the clerk allegedly said, I mean not clerk, but the charges right allegedly said. Unless you want her to come and verify that, cause you made a couple comments saying that she said sabotaging. I would just steer clear from that, and I think, I don't know if I'm speaking for vice mayor Bennett, but is that one of the things that, cause that.
I'm not here, we're even, I mean, we're not here for that, that's not on the items, but I mean, that's what I'm saying is. We need to stick to what's on the agenda.
It is part of the agenda.
I mean, it's not what you are concluding to.
To discuss and or take action regarding recent events involving the two offices, I believe, I believe that. Part of what happened between the two offices was the finger pointing of who was doing stuff right and wrong. And that's why some of this stuff came up.
So how does that constitute an investigation?
It's not an investigation, I want to have, because.
But I mean, it's just like.
Itself has had.
Oh, can I just interject and ask the attorney for clarity, so that way we can not, so I guess the question, and correct me if I'm wrong, vice mayor Bennett. You're feeling kinda like the discussion or the topics raised pertaining to an audit slash investigation, is it pertinent to the agenda items? Councillor Randolph is saying.
And it's accusatory.
An accusatory, um and councillor Randolph is saying the fact that it says and or take action regarding certain events. Leaves it that she can talk about the items that she's trying to to address. Um is that correct, which one is correct, or is there a fine line in the middle?
Yourself, cause you wanna go too fast.
Okay, my, if I understand correctly, your your point of order is that councillor Randolph's. Um comments and or direction for the actions she will like council to take, whether it be an audit slash investigation, but I'm hearing councillor Randolph is saying. Invest, I mean, audits, is not, is accusatory and not pertaining to the agenda item that we have in front of us. As it relates to the issue in terms of um the banning.
That is correct.
Councillor Randolph is saying that the fact that the agenda item is broad and it says discuss and or take action regarding recent events. Gives her the ability to move in that direction as she has started to take. So I'm asking the city attorney for clarity, um or is there like a middle line that we can do?
Well, I think we've kind of shifted a little bit from the general question as to whether or not the the um. Discussion is germane to the agenda item as it is written, because we had, we have before the council right now. We have before the council right now, the equivalent of an amendment to the main motion which is uh made by Counselor Pelham. And that is to do a forensic audit relative to all of the city departments. So the discussion right now. Is going to that. At some point in the discussion, a appointed question was made to uh Counselor Randolph. As to um whether or not her her main motion. Was authorized based on the agenda item, but again, I think we're we're past that now. The the motion before the body right now is the amended motion posed by Counselor Pelham. Relative to a forensic audit for all of the city departments as I recall it.
Okay, so if I understand you correctly, that means that Counselor Randolph for the time being will need to limit her. Comments discussion pertaining to to the motion on the floor.
Right, so the 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 main motion had not been put to the body for discussion before the amendment was made. So the the amendment is. Yes, I'm treating I'm treating I'm treating it in the nature of an amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, before we move on, I see. The city manager, did you mean to hit your light? Then Counselor Denton hit her light, but the person has the floor right now is still Counselor Randolph.
Did you? I'm not trying to be accusatory. I'm just, maybe the treasurer could join us at the podium. And maybe she could help me to understand uh if what was printed in the paper was incorrect. Or if some of the other pieces of information that I gave out were incorrect. I'm I'm trying to get some help to try and see if.
Is this still pertaining to the forensic audit? That's the motion that's on the floor.
Discussion should be right now.
So just as a reminder, right now, the motion is the forensic audit. If that does not carry. Then it goes back to the broader conversation. We have but um city manager, then we have Counselor Denton, and then I would like to speak after Counselor Denton. And just Madam Clerk, can you help make sure that I'm correct? Right now I have Randolph speaking once on this item, Parton once, Pelham once.
I haven't spoken on this at all.
Right, I didn't say your name. I said Randolph, Parton, Pelham, and then Bennett. You are correct. Thank you. Go ahead.
Well, I would ask the question um with regard to the need for a forensic audit. Typically, there is something that gives rise to the need for something like that from a criminal activity standpoint. I mean that's and and I would I would caution that if we went into this without any specific. We are potentially writing a blank check to whomever we contract with to continue to look and look and look and there may. And there may not be anything there. Nothing has come out of fifteen, sixteen, seventeen. That would give rise to criminal activity that I think would warrant such an audit. So I would caution council as to the cost, the potential cost of what this might be. In our neighboring jurisdiction, there was a specific activity in an office that was looked at. And it was limited at a certain point in time to that activity, not the entire city because it it becomes rather expensive and costly to do that. While we still will conduct eighteen, nineteen, and ultimately twenty. So if there were something that were consistently to come out of that that would give rise to potential criminal activity, our auditors would alert us to that fact. And then you could continue to take that course of action. So I would just caution. Just a wide open. Forensic audit without any specific as to what we're looking for. I would I'm I'm just cautioning council the cost of that could be rather expensive.
It's okay.
Um Counselor Denton, you have the floor.
I would just like to also say um. We're having these audits, the CAFRA right now is very important. We need to get these CAFRs done. They are audits of the city. And we have been late and we are still late. And it is showing up on the website where bonds, people are investing in bonds are seeing it. They see that we are not doing what we should be doing. I feel like right now for the city, we've got a budget. We know what we're doing. We've got finally got the munis going. And I think with the finance director we have, he's working with the different departments. And he's, it took twenty-two months to get the first one done. A year to get the second one done and about seven months to get the third one done. So I'm hoping we're coming down each time. Because they are coming together. My suggestion would be not to do a forensic audit right now. But let's get these CAFRs done. Let's get caught up. And once we're caught up, and I was, I can talk about this because I was in a meeting. In Richmond with the APA when Mr. Churchman of Burkitt, Cherry Burkitt said. That when they're doing the CAFRs, about fifteen percent they're checking. To see if anything illegal is going on. Because the word fraud, uh malfeasance was used in that meeting. There is no proof. There has been no proof. So my suggestion would be let's finish these audits. They are so important to our city. I just cannot stress to you the importance. A bond rating, we need a bond rating. We need a fire station. We can't get a fire station till we get a bond rating. So we can go out and borrow the funds. So we've got to get our city finances straight. At the end of that, when we're on time, hopefully by the end of this year, this is August, September, October, November. Four months, five months will be caught up. If things are showing at that point that it's not right, then we call in for a forensic audit. But I cannot stress to you all and to our citizens in the city. The importance right now of getting these CAFRs done. So I can't vote for a forensic now.
Okay, um I request to speak after Counselor Denton. I think Counselor Parton had his light on after me. My position on this is council, since the last council, has been having a discussion about. Creating a position for internal auditor on our pending list for about a year now. Um we've asked for there to be an internal auditor in order to check, make sure the checks and balances were being adhered to. Because of the audit findings that we were seeing as of the fifteen fifteen CAFRA. Sixteen, we got in November. Seventeen, we just got about a month ago. Um we never got to that. It's been on the pending list. There was RFPs that we had. That was a draft that we could have used as an example or a template to put out there. In terms of they're not being concerned, uh well, let me just say. Council has the performance review that we're doing underway right now with certain departments. We have Parks and Recreation, Public Works. And then the Fire Department, I believe, is currently doing it right now. They're wrapping up that process. I have on the agenda for the twentieth for council to decide which offices are gonna be next for that internal review. And that's from an outside group that specializes in government to come in and evaluate the processes. Policies, procedures, customer service, employee morale, things of that nature. That is an opportunity for us to say we want to focus on finance. Um in terms of discussions about there being concerns of fraud, that is correct. Um there was an ask to have an emergency meeting with the state orders of public accounts. Three years ago, two thousand seventeen, I believe it was August twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. When we had that item on the agenda, only four people voted in support of having that meeting with the APA. And we did ask for the Office of Inspector General, the Secretary of Finance, and other key people at the state to be in that meeting. Because of concerns related to fraud, because of emails that we have received from the former finance director. Those emails were not wrong. We do have issues with the CPMT CSA office. And that's caused us to have to pay back a million dollars because of um internal problems related to fraud in that office. Um so there is proof that that happened. The FY seventeen audit that we got about a month ago has that inside of that audit. My issue is in terms of staffing, um resources. I think that that should be citywide conversation. That's why I'm pushing for council to take action to address the audit findings. If you were here present at the last meeting that we had, the auditor said the late the new audit that we have said a material weakness is a. Is the worst type of audit finding a locality can receive. We had over twenty of them. And the problem is that they've been the same audit issues carrying over from year to year to year. Ones in fifteen or in sixteen, sixteen or in seventeen, we're about to do eighteen. The issue that we had is when we first was brought to council's attention, it was well after the fact, right? So we sat down to deal with it. We brought in someone, um that person left. We brought in a second finance director who is here now. The promise to council was we can get all of these caught up in a year. That year was last year. Since that last year, we've only received one audit. So um I know people want us to keep waiting and keep waiting, but I don't know how long it's gonna take to get caught up. The biggest thing that was found in the audits so far um is training of staff. That seems to be repeat finding. A repeat finding is means I know that people keep saying is the implementation, but this has been implemented. Five years ago, maybe longer, and there's still issues with staff not understanding how to use the system. Council was reassured a couple of years ago that there will be money put aside for training for munis. I know there's some money right now in the budget, but I don't know if it's enough for people to really get the resources that they need. From my understanding, there's some other elements of munis that haven't fully been implemented to date. Um that would help with some of this pro- processes. So um the other concerns that came out of this were lack of contracts, lack of security protocols in our financial systems. Pretty much the same things that we need to address across the board for everyone. The la- last thing I would say is when we first was brought up to speed in terms of how bad the audits were. Uh the treasurer's office at the time was a year late in reconciling the cash. Um we were unable to start the audit until a year after it was due because the money had not been reconciled. So I would certainly believe there's processes across the board for everyone. I think that the best way to approach is is making sure that we put finance department at the top of the performance review for the next wave of that. Um I am supportive of forensic audit for CPMT and CSA because from from my understanding, one has not been conducted to date for that. But also would say that, you know, we have a meeting on the fifteenth Tuesday now to have a discussion with the auditors up until now, our conversation with them has been pretty. Um we had a meeting recently with them, but only one of the auditors could come. So we'll have a chance to really dive into the needs at that time. The other positive I would say is the state attorney has been asked to look at some of our policies and procedures in terms of finance. To figure out how council can tighten those um guidelines up and to help make sure that we have processes and procedures in place. So I would say that um I definitely think that we need to look at everyone as a whole and really investigate why the audits are taking so long. Um there's some departments and funds that couldn't even be audited. They couldn't even produce their financial records. And that is year after year after year. And so there's a problem there. Um the last thing, I'm sorry, I said it was the last thing, but here's the issue that really should bring a red flag to everyone. The auditors that we have are fiscal year fifteen. We were told the audit was complete. Come to find out the transmittal files weren't submitted. Come to find out the CFA isn't done. We found out about the CFA, which is the federal audit this year. Then we find out at the last meeting that we had that there had to be restatements and that they had to redo the whole fifteen audit. It was done. We had to redo it. Why? Parts of it is not completed. Why? So there are issues that we need to address across the board. Um I'm in support of performance review. Starting with the finance department once this last one is complete, and I'm in support of forensic audit for CPMT, Social Services, and CSA.
Counselor Parton, and then Counselor Randolph. Oh, you you okay, sorry, Counselor Randolph. What was it? You then Counselor? I'm sorry, you then Counselor Randolph.
Thank you. Yeah, and well, the the CAFRA to me does do an audit, but it seemed like. It's really about procedure. I mean, I guess if they see something that's uh that looks like it's fraud or whatever. But as as she previously stated, there was issues before, it definitely. I'm, we either need an internal auditor or we need a forensic audit to to address all the issues. That keep coming over, over and over again. And we can pay a million dollars for one oh for one audit. It's just like you have a cancer and don't know all the details. Why would you let it keep growing without figuring out? Uh questions about even wastewater over and over. Think questions that the the orders have about wastewater. What gidget states order over and over or whatever. It's just too many open holes in the city in the finance area. So an audit all that does is re- research the root causes. And prevent further delay in not knowing what we are as a whole. That's my issue. We we have to know where we are and the surface cap, this CAFRA is like a surface. This is a general medical evaluation. The forensics gives you a surgery. We need surgery. And whether or not I don't, don't compare me with another city, you know what I'm saying? Because if if they found out one thing about that city that made it a better city. So we find out a half inch might mean, even though it might not be the same percentage of the error. One thing for us might be worth a million dollars and for them, a half a thing could be fifty dollars. But we. We need a forensic audit. It's not to say that we know that someone frauding the information, but it follows. If they see something, they'll follow to the end. These guys don't do that. They'll come back and tell you about your procedure and how you materially need to change things, but they don't normally. In the uh findings say go between departments that I've read. So we can find the money for a whole bunch of stuff. You know that, right? We just talked about a half a million dollars for to build something. So it's something else to to be put on hold that's construction wise. You ain't gonna be constructing nothing if you don't get your finances in order. If you want a fire department, I want a fire department. It's in my ward. I would love to have a new fire department. But you can't build a fire department if you don't have no money. And your finances haven't been defined. So don't don't we really want to know? What what is going on? I I really want to know and uh. As such, just um we have to find out and prevent, find out what the root causes of our finances and. And the other thing is, I guess I have to wait to comment about if this motion doesn't pass, but. The things. The things that happen in in a office, the person could have gotten rid of every person in her office. The first day she came on board. And she didn't gave people a chance to be changed loyalties and to serve the citizens of Hopewell. If they chose not to do that, then subsequently they left or whatever, so. A lot of staff turnover, but it's. It's for the good. That's it.
Counselor Randolph, Mr. Manager, if I don't do, is Counselor Randolph.
You're gonna let the city manager speak, are you?
I just asked.
After me.
I just wanted him to speak to this. He he's he's got the education for this, not.
I mean, we do too. That's why we're sitting here. Counselor um.
Can I speak then?
One second. She was asking. She's asking for.
Counselor Randolph has already spoken twice on this subject.
Well, no, the second time I was I was speaking to my motion when it should have been to Brenda's motion. Because she said.
I'm sorry, no disrespect at all. Um Mayor Gore clarified with me who had spoken and you were on that list.
Okay.
Even though it was really short time, unfortunately, it was twice. Even though it was really short time, unfortunately, it was twice.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so the city manager, and I believe Counselor Denton had her light on. Counselor Parton, did I overlook you? Okay, okay, just wanna make sure I'm not. Okay, it's city manager, the Counselor Denton.
So, what I'd like to just clarify for everyone is that we're talking about audits that occurred fiscal year fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. The staff that is on hand now, including the finance staff, of which some of those were not here. Okay, so when we're making statements about our finances and our finance staff, the finance director was not here in the time period in which we're talking about the audits.
That's not correct.
No.
No, it is incorrect.
I'm not talking about people, I'm sorry. I'm not talking about people. I'm talking about procedures.
Point of order, he's talking.
That's right. I just wanted to put it out there. I'm not talking about people, talking about procedures.
Point of order.
She has a point of order.
The city manager speak without the.
The rules are one at a time.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
If I understand, Mr. Terry arrived in the fall of seventeen, which would not have been, uh, the budget which he was involved in for seventeen. And we begun to address audit issues and audit findings and make corrections and processes as we're moving on. That's how we're gonna make sure that what we're dealing with nineteen and twenty becomes corrected. Now, we do know, and we have said all along, we know that there will be issues that occur in fifteen, will occur in sixteen, will occur in seventeen, cause we're just finding about that, those, about those now. Well, we should have been found out about them at the end of the current, that fiscal year. In the fall of fifteen, we should have had a fiscal year fifteen audit completed. So, we're just, they're stacking up on us, and that's why we're finding about these issues now. So, uh, the, the current staff is fully committed to restoring our financial system and our finances. So we can move forward and do things. Uh, just as a point of clarification, uh, and not to the, the funding that was discussed when we earlier for the Riverwalk, it's a grant funding, so that, that would not be available to do anything. But, um, we take, Mr. Terry and I and others, getting our audits completed and making the necessary corrections so we restore our financial position, is our number one priority. We take that very seriously. So, I know Mr. Terry and his staff have been working with city departments to correct issues, to provide access to Munis, to people that may not have had it in order to do some of the functions that they needed to do. So I know they are working proactively to address situations. So I don't want the community to think that we're not addressing these issues proactively, we are. So. And if council chooses to do a forensic audit, uh, I think, you know, and you correct, with this, the CSA issue is out there, we know that, that's been identified, and legal action has been taken with regard to that. Uh, but, again, I would, if there's, if there's gonna be some sort of, I'm, I, in my mind, I'm trying to think of how you would craft an RFP.
You were about to.
So, just to, to put this out the bid as to what we would be looking for. So, that's all.
Counselor Denton, you're gonna try, I'll speak after you.
Okay, um, just, let me ask the city manager. You kinda got me concerned a little bit when you said, we don't have, have any idea of what a forensic audit would cost. Do you have any idea? Because we know we're going way over budget on the cafirs.
I didn't say when.
Yes, we did do the CSA, we, we got, um, I guess, what do you wanna call it? Uh, the FBI came in, thoroughly investigated, and two people are behind bars because they stole close to a million dollars from the city. But the FBI was here, they investigated fully, and two people, which are now serving time in prison. So, we've taken care of that, but I'm just, I know we've lost that money, we gotta pay that back. But, what are we looking at?
I, I do not have an idea what a forensic audit will cost the city and how long it would take. I think, you, obviously, the amount of money that we're gonna spend is gonna be driven by the amount of time that they spend here.
What will this take away from the cafirs being done?
Well, we're still gonna have to find a way to continue to complete our normal audits while this would be going on, because we need to get those done. We can't stop that process and have those, getting our audits current, continue to fall further behind, because then that creates another set of issues for us to have to deal with with regard to bond ratings and other things. So we need to find a way, if this is the trap path we're going, to continue to do our normal audits and get them up to date while this process would be going on, and se- kind of separate the two objectives a little bit. But, we're not, at this point, way over budget on any audit. Uh, we, we know that there's a lot of discussion to last meeting with the fifteen caffir and how much it costs, but we're nowhere near that type of expense on any other audit that we've done.
Okay, so, um, Madam Clerk, can you tell me how much time I have left?
You spoke for six minutes and thirty-three seconds.
So, again, I support a performance review. Um, they're wrapping now, we have the money already set aside to do that, so the funding is present. Just to, just to clarify what I'm talking about when I made my comments. Um, if there are corrections to processes and procedures, we haven't gotten a full vetting of that or review of it. We've been asking for that information. Finance committee in particular, council has been asking for that. We really haven't had the finance director come and talk about everything he's adopted, anything that he's adopted. What I heard from the last meeting, and it keeps to be the, the repeat answer is, we're gonna wait until we're caught up to go back and address each of the audit findings. That's what we were told at the last meeting. Counselor Pelham drilled him, and he kept sticking to that Counselor Denton actually brought the contract and raised the point. You, you kinda backed that when you were saying, this is what I understood, because that was what was in the contract at the time. So that was correct. Some of us are saying that opportunity to do that has come and gone. Well, again, we were promised it to be fixed and, and to be addressed, caught up in a year. The year has come and gone. So therefore, we need to rethink this, especially because the federal audits have not been completed since two thousand fourteen. That affects our school funding. Um, so, the APA wrote a letter, a portion of a letter that she, I got, and she said to our delegate that she had grave concerns about our federal funding. The other thing, in response to that, um, council bears a responsibility of the city's finances. Staff does work day to day, and I'm pretty sure they're doing their, their hardest, I understand that. However, the ultimate responsibility to ensure that it gets done is council. When we sit here and we're trying to get stuff passed, we've been talking about infrastructure improvements, things that we wanna do in the community, things that people are asking for, we can't even talk or touch those things because the answer is, we gotta get caught up on our audits. That's been the same answer for a year and a half, and I'm tired of waiting to sit here and talk about, how can we put extra money aside to work on infrastructure? How can we sit here and, and build a fire station? How can we sit here and work on stormwater pumps, people's yards don't keep flooding? We have to keep waiting. And, I mean, at some point, enough is enough. I'm not saying that people are not working hard, but if the problem is you need more manpower in the office, then let's put it on the agenda to bring in more people. We spent a hundred, eight, eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars on fifteen and is still going. For all that amount of money and the staff that was brought in to help them with fifteen audit, we could've came back with some answers about how to fix fifteen and move it forward. We could've came back with a plan or something. We have nothing. Four years in, five years in, we still don't have anything. So, that's the problem that I have. Um, not saying people don't work hard, and not saying that this, you know, they, they don't care, but we don't have time to wait. I've been standing council my whole second term and still don't have an answer about the audits. I've been asking, how much money do we have in our reserve? Found out we're negative five hundred thousand? Roughly into, according to, at fiscal year seventeen, we're in nineteen. I should be able to ask the question about how much do we have in our accounts and get the answer. I should be able to talk about procurement, because I'm trying to work with contracts. The same people get the same contracts, the same people get to, um, have purchases. Are we, are we diversifying how we're spending money, how we're putting people in the community? We can't even get to that. So, for me, I'm not trying to sit here and wait my whole term and not address any things that we're sitting here to do. At the end of the day, bucks starts with council. So if staff needs whatever they need, they need to say what they need. Manpower is it, then that's what we need to do. I mean, that, it's as simple as that. In terms of Petersburg, PB Mayor is the auditor that did the forensic audit for Petersburg. There are auditor that we have right now. We talked to them a year ago about doing an internal audit and a forensic audit. And they said, the way they approached Petersburg was to ask them, what is it that they need? What were they trying to get to? And they said they're doing it pieces. Because they went too deep too soon, and they could've stopped at different layers. So this is a way that you can approach doing internal audit or, uh, forensic audit. Again, I'm for a performance review. We had the money set aside, so it shouldn't be a question about if we can pay for it, it's already in the budget. It shouldn't be a question on who we can contact, we got the people. So, and they're wrapping up right now. So, I just wanna clarify that. And again, some people were not here when the problems happened, but the audit was just completed in nineteen, eighteen, nineteen. They're present, why couldn't they produce documents? Even if they weren't there for when the work happened, why couldn't people produce contracts? Why couldn't they produce financial records?
Mayor Gore, your time is up.
I, I have a question for the C attorney before I move forward. There is a light, and I'm not trying to be difficult or, uh, but I wanna ask clarity. Is, if I can call on staff and they respond to what I just said, rebuttal, or a comment, or whatever, since I've spoken twice, am I gonna be allowed to comment?
According to your rules, no.
All right, Counselor Parton.
So, I think my understanding is, you know, what discussion started out was to be meant as help for a department. I think, all of this has heightened our motions. And I'd like to entertain a substitute motion to postpone a decision on any audit that we want to go down and allow the city manager and the finance director to get quotes on the various types of audits that we can do, whether it's a forensic audit for the entire city, a forensic audit, as Mayor Gore said, for social services, CPMT and CSA, or for individual departments.
Second.
And, excuse, oh, sorry. Um, and, Mr. Altman, how much time would you need to get quotes? For those types?
One of order before discussion, uh, Madam Mayor, I mean, Attorney. Can you make his motion and so we?
Hold on one second, what's your question, so I can tell you?
My question is, can you ask a question in the middle of your motion before a second?
Right, so. Yeah, we've been, we've been doing.
I'm asking Madam Attorney.
But I have to tell you if you're gonna ask her.
Okay, tell me.
We've kinda been doing it already, so I mean. You can ask her, but, but I will let him do it, because we've been normally doing that, but Madam Attorney.
Okay, so, the, the amended motion was properly before the body because the main motion had not been put to the body for discussion. The amended motion was put to body, to the body for discussion, and so if there's a substitute motion, that has to be a motion to substitute, you take a vote on that, and if the answer is no, then you roll back.
Uh, my question was, can he make a, ask a question, and he made a motion, but it wasn't seconded yet. Can he?
It will die without a second, but I believe the question was posed to me before an opportunity for a second was, was offered, but I'm, I'm not sure. If there wasn't a second, then it dies for lack of a second.
It was a second, okay.
Okay, so. Going off the facts that were given to me.
But just to your point of clarification, you have to ask for a question, make a substitute.
I mean, and the, the body has to permit that, but it's, uh, it's out of order otherwise. So he can't just simply make the motion and then a second, and then we, we discuss that. The second, the, the second motion, which is the amended motion by Pelham, is the one that's properly before this body at this point.
Counselor Parton, do you understand what she's asking?
So I need to make a motion to ask for substitute.
So you move to substitute your motion for hers, and then there's a, there is a a vote on that, and then you pose your substitute motion to be voted up or down if that motion to substitute passes. If any of those fail, we go back to the amended motion, which is again, the one that's before the body right now for discussion.
So, I move that we make a substitute motion.
Second.
Discussion. No discussion, roll call, please.
Counselor Holloway?
No.
Counselor Parton?
Yes.
Mayor Gore?
No.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Pelham?
No.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
No.
Counselor Randolph?
Yes.
Motion fails. Forty-three.
Madam Clerk, for the record, can you please read the current motion on the floor?
The current motion on the floor, the amended motion, uh, placed by Counselor Pelham, is for, oh, my glasses. Is for a forensic audit. I'm sorry. It's for a forensic audit for the whole city, either by a department or at one time. That's the current motion. That motion was seconded by Vice Mayor Bennett. Vice Mayor?
Bennett.
Bennett.
It's only one vice mayor.
One, um, clarification, if I can, Mr. Madam C attorney, since her motion is to con- for them to conduct a forensic audit, correct? And for them to do that, we have to have a bid, RFP, all of those things, correct? Before staff can take action, they have to be authorized to take action. So, if we vote on this, is it give blanket authority to do that, or is it expected proper procedure for staff to come back to us with the information?
Yeah, the latter.
It's expected for them to come back to us?
All you're just doing is authorizing that, or saying we want that to be done, and then whatever processes need to be followed in order to effectuate that, and then staff will bring them back to council as required.
I didn't say we. So. I can't, yeah, I can't say anything else either, where?
No.
Point of clarification on my motion?
Yes.
Can I make that, Madam Ma- Attorney?
Sure, go ahead, ask her, because she was, I don't know the answer to your question. Point of, she has a point of, she has a question about her motion.
Can I ask a question about my motion?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion doesn't indicate a timeframe.
Right.
Would that, um, clarify more if I added that, or is it too late to do that?
No, you, at, at this point, you'd have to ask the body to amend your motion, because it's, again, been put to the body for discussion. But as a substantive remark, um, it, I don't think it would make it any more clear or less clear. It's pretty clear. Uh, everything doesn't have to be contained in this one motion. You can take steps to move it along as, as time goes by.
If it's approved, it doesn't have to be immediate, is my.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's my, which not, was not my intention, but.
Well, I mean, from a, from just a substantive standpoint, you would still have to lay the groundwork for that, so, you know.
Follow up?
Yes, ma'am.
On the agenda, okay.
So, we're technically still in discussion, correct?
If somebody calls, unless you call the question, so.
Okay. All right.
That's it.
Yep. Wait, the motion, what are we doing? I think we should ask the question.
Yes, ma'am. The motion on the floor is, excuse me, for, to conduct a forensic audit for the entire city, either by department or all at one time. That is the motion on the floor. Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Counselor Parton?
No.
Mayor Gore?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
No.
Counselor Pelham?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett? Counselor Randolph?
No.
Motion passes, four-three.
Okay, there's still the main motion.
So that was, I guess, the conclusion of SB one. SB two is workplace safety. Uh, I believe we discussed this, but I will defer to Counselor Randolph. Um, if we have addressed the issue to discuss and or take action, um, addressing workplace safety within a municipal building.
Um, the SB two, uh, I'm going to ask that the city ma-
Um, the SB two, uh, I'm going to ask that the city manager give us a. An understanding of what workplace safety measures are in place today. And what other localities, uh, have that we might look at to improve workplace safety. Uh, for this, the departments here in the city.
I think, first of all, I think the, earlier in the evening, we had a discussion. Around workplace safety with regard to, um. Departments and individuals regarding banning them from the premises and such. And a question was asked about, well, is there something in place where people could mediate? Well, our HR department has those types of services available between departments if there's an issue, or even between employees to provide. Something of that nature. So, that is one of those items that. Earlier was discussed as a workplace safety issue that we do have available to us, and should departments or individuals. Need those services, we can procure those or get those for them, and from a mediation standpoint, to work through issues between individuals. Overall, from a workplace safety standpoint. I have tasks, uh, our public safety officers, HR department, and others, to look at our workplace. Uh, issues with regard to, uh, safety. They are, worked on a draft, I'm reviewing the draft. We're looking at short term, uh, immediate, short term, and long term solutions. Uh, some of the long term solutions really are gonna revolve more around hardening of the building. Uh, locks in place to, to keep, uh, individuals out of certain areas, particularly say. Uh, we've had an instance where we had a special meeting of council, council was in closed session. Uh, we had, myself and the clerk were the only ones here. We went downstairs, and we walked, and when, when the clerk hit the bottom of the steps, there was someone standing there. So, how can we secure the building to keep individuals out of, roaming, from roaming the building when they don't need to be in certain areas? So there's some things that we're gonna work on with regard to that, and some of that will have costs that we'll have to bring back to council in order to address. But we're looking at, how can we, uh, make immediate? And small, some of small immediate changes with regard to some of the events that have occurred and doing drills. So we're working through that process, and we'll be, uh, taking some of those i- items to staff and conducting some, uh. Drills, some trainings. Uh, we sent out a, uh, a video earlier this year. Uh, we, the sheriff's department does what they call Alice training, uh, with regard to, um. Essentially, they're the same thing where you wanna look at how you're protecting yourself in the immediacy of an event. Uh, and then, from there, what steps you need to take to get yourself away from danger. Uh, so, we are working on to, towards that. We've got some, a little bit of work to do. Uh, I don't know that, of our buildings, certainly courthouse is probably the, the most secure of our buildings with. Uh, metal detectors, uh, sheriff's deputies, uh, but we need to be able to address and take, and find that balance that was discussed earlier, with this is a public building. So, citizens need to be able to come and go, uh, but we do need to provide for the safety of our employees. So we are working towards that. We don't have a final plan in place yet. Uh, but we are working towards that.
That's it?
Well, I mean, the reality is, is we don't have anything in place in the building. It's never been an issue, uh, that in my time here until recent events that. Uh, bring rise to what we need to do, and in order to, to address that, we have to step back. Take that analysis piece, which is what we're in the process of doing now, before we can bring some recommendations forward. Some of them are gonna be so small. How do we react? How do we train our employees in the case of an emergency? And, you know, there's someone in the building. Right now, on the major, I can just speak from the second floor right now. You have a secondary set of doors that you can go down instead of being in the hallway to get in individually. It's a matter of getting each department. To understand how, how they, what are their points of ingress and egress, how they can get out. And the, and breaking it down and working with those individual departments, and then overall, doing some training within the building on drills.
Well, and, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate your input on that, but in light of. Uh, events that have been happening for many years now with. Public shootings, uh, we have usually an officer that stands back there for us. Um, in case any, anybody were to get mad enough at, at, uh, council that they would come in. And we have open carry in this city that allows public citizens to walk into the building with guns. Um, and, uh, the, uh, the whole point of this meeting tonight was the Commissioner of Revenue. And the Treasurer's Department, and both of them are, uh, taking monies and dealing with people that sometimes are not very happy. And while we are public servants and we have to deal with that. There also is a capacity to keep those offices and the employees in those offices safe. And so, I would recommend that we, um, somehow look at that. And where that fine line that the city attorney talked about tonight, where we have some avenues to take it. We have to give these departments, their staff and their managers, uh, more than just, um, here's where you get in and out of the building. Um, and, and, and I'm not, I'm not trying to be, uh, ugly to you. I understand that. There are limitations to what we can do, but I think for the safety of staff in this government, we wanna look at. What is, uh, what is our capacity to, uh, do as much as we can? And I'm sure that council understands that there will be potential future costs associated with that. But I think we need to be, uh, uh, looking at the biggest asset of this city is our people. And because of that, we need to protect them, uh, even when somebody, uh, is getting a little upset. And, um, the treasurer's husband was, has, has sat up here, I know. And, uh, I assume that is to make sure that her, his, his family member is okay during some of these issues. So, um, I just want to be assured that we are going to look at that further and bring that out, so.
So, yes, Councilor Pelham had her light on before you, then Vice Mayor Bennett. I just wanna ask, and I'm, I'm truly not trying to be difficult. I've been trying to. Isn't there a rule, is it three oh six, three oh three? Can we stop referring to people who are not on this day unless there's direct council staff or city employee staff, because. It's starting to be a little much.
Why? Because I said to your husband, it's.
Yeah, well, I mean, there's plenty of people have families.
You're making assumptions about somebody, you know, unless you've spoken to that person, you don't know what they're feeling, or why they come.
Councilor Pelham. Yeah.
What?
It comes every meeting. I'll, I'll wait for City Attorney to look at that. I just wanna keep it, not directed. I mean, if you're gonna do both offices, like, keep doing both offices. Um. Councilor Dan, as Pelham, Bennett, did you have your light on? I don't wanna make sure I miss you.
Yeah.
So it's Pelham, Bennett, Dan.
Yeah, but so, uh, you said, we, you have a special committee, or is just all departments, uh, getting together to. Try to make a workplace safety plan?
Uh, what I, I've asked, uh, police, fire, emergency services, HR, risk management, sheriff's office to be involved.
Alright, so y'all getting, you just starting that process?
Yeah, they, we met, I, I kinda gave them a directive. I've gotten kind of a draft report back. And I'm going through it, and we need to get a little more detail there, and when I'm, you know, when I'm comfortable with it, then we'll be ready to move forward with some things.
But I also realized, say, you said something about that, this is the first time something has happened. There, I don't know, since the first time, you may have been exposed to it, but, and I can't remember if you, when you were here before, but. Um, during your absence for sure, there have been issues that other people were, um. Requested action be taken against staff, in fact, the past city clerk. And, uh.
It didn't come to council?
It, it did, well, it didn't come to council, because. Um, well, it did, I guess in a letter, but, um. Anyway, there's been other instances, and so, um, again, that's the point I was making about. We should be careful what we say, and assume it's what somebody's intentions are. Thank you.
Okay, um, Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes, um, I just wanted to ex, uh. Ask this of the city manager, and I think this has to, get the recommendation of the Madam City Attorney. Um, when you say there's gonna be, you have a short term, uh, Mr. City Manager, short term, um. Drills, things that you can ensure, or in a, you know, in that for workplace safety. And the other thing I wanted to talk about and to see if there is something in place as far as anyone that's in the city. A city worker, or even a constitutional officer, or a counselor. Um, about how to diffuse situations. I mean, we have, um, we have social media. And things like that. I mean, where do we draw the line as far as what we can say, or the things that we. We say, rather than diffusing the situation, actually aggravating the situation. So is there a way, something that we can look up in the FOIA policy, or is there some training that we can do? Something that we can implement?
Uh, speaking from the staff perspective, I mean, we, with all new hires, and then we do a refresh, uh, we do workforce, uh. You know, harassment, workforce violence, we, we, we do trainings like that, and we're talking, that's part of this whole discussion, is a refresh of that. We do those, when we do, uh, intake with new employees, they go through a series of, of videos that discuss those issues. But with regard to, say, FOIA or anything like that, I would defer to the city attorney.
Well, I mean, in my example, let's just, I'm gonna use you, um, Mr. City Manager as an example. I don't agree with something that you've done, um, and I go onto my social media site and I say. And I have questions from constituents, and they say, why did this happen? I don't know why this happened. You need to go down there and go talk to that city manager, and tell him how you feel. Now, instead of diffusing the situation, you aggravated the situation. So that is where I'm coming to. I want to see if there's a policy we can put in place. For counselors, anyone that works for the city, in the city, local government. That we can have a policy where we are, we are, we have boundaries. And we do not, we act as civil servants. And we bring peace rather than chaos. So, I would like to ask for that. I'm sorry.
Mr. City Manager, she's. Can you hold on one second, one second?
That's exactly what I'm trying to get at, to get a policy for that.
And then I'll bring you up, okay? Can you answer a question?
Well, with, with regard to the, the, the example provided with you going on social media. So, there may be, I'd have to, we have, uh, the ability to have a social media policy, which has been discussed. Uh, since I've been here, and I think there's a draft, and I don't know what the issues have been as to why. One reason or another hasn't moved forward, but there is a social media policy draft that was reviewed. By our city attorney, uh, previous city attorney, certainly I would assume Mrs. Robinson would wanna look at that draft before we took any action on it. That could, could, and I legally, uh, she'll have to answer this question, as to what extent. I don't, uh, you could limit free speech, or use of social media. She'd have to speak to that, but I understand what you're saying completely, um. You know, I, I think probably against the advice of council, if I had a policy for staff, I would probably say. Just stay off social media, because it, it can create more problems than it's worth. But I don't know that from a First Amendment, freedom of speech perspective, I can do that with staff, but I'll defer to Mrs. Robinson on that issue. But we do have the ability to have a social media policy, um. I would say with regard to not, with relationship to constitutional offices. There would be the ability, if council wanted to entertain it, if to, to extend, and you have to tell me more, if you wanted to extend these protections out. There could be a memo, an MOU with offices that. Fall under these policies, and that's agreed upon and approved by council, and, you know, done, so with that off. Let Mrs. Robinson back clean up.
Okay, um, may I just ask for clarification? What is the specific question upon which you would like me to opine? Is it just limited to your example on the social media policy?
Social media policy, um, I know we can't, we don't have authority or rights over, you know, the newspaper. But as far as what we say as either constitutional officers, or anybody on council. What we say, can, how that can affect. Workplace safety.
There's, there is in, in law, a separate standard for inciting violence. And, um, we shouldn't blur the lines between, you know, sort of different ideas or policies. We would have to have a social media policy to speak to what our employees do on social media. But as the example set forth, um, the. The statement per se wasn't inciting violence. It was offering, um, a constituent or whoever responded a chance to participate in government. And this is a reasonable way. How things affect people, again, it becomes very subjective. So go down and tell the city council how you feel about them considering or their vote on X, Y, and Z. That's a, that's a fundamental act of participating in your government. That may cross the line, as someone is actually, you know, effectuating or exercising that right. We have to just be able to separate the behavior that goes too far. But our policy can't be as broad as that. Our policy would have to be narrowly tailored to. Um, the types of words that would actually be offensive and be deemed unlawful without a social media policy. Another thing is, you know, we can, we can actually try to regulate conduct on social media. While someone is on duty, but then there's a totally different standard applied to what is done off duty. So that goes to your employees. Now, relative to city council members. You can, you can probably adopt a rule that, you, you know, you'd hope everyone follow. Sort of as along, along the lines of a gentleman, gentleman's agreement to just sort of loosely refer to it. But you can't regulate the, the conduct of one of, an elected official online. Again, how far that person goes with their online speech would have to be evaluated under a separate standard.
And what standard would that be?
It would be, it was gonna be governed by the facts. So, let's say, for instance, um, you know, someone is. Inciting harassing behavior, harassing someone online. Rather than that being a sort of a clear violation of social media policy, which could, it could very well be if you say you can't. Harass someone online, um, but you would use the harassment laws that are in place for your locality to pursue that further. Um, you know, th- there is a separate law for curse and abuse. I mean, that's a criminal violation. It's a low level misdemeanor, but, you know, people sometime use profane language. In the social media policy, I'm not saying that makes it okay, but again, the regulation becomes very guarded. Depending on where that person is, when they're engaging in that online conduct. Finally, if we're talking about just employees, employees, there's a whole series of cases out of the National Labor. Um, Relations Board that addresses how far an employer can go. In terms of regulating their employees' off-duty conduct online. And even when it's absolutely critical, and you may think it crosses the line. You know, the, the exception to that behavior or the policy exists if that person is speaking to. A condition of their employment, which the board has determined they have a right to do that. And then it becomes a question is, uh, question of whether or not they have gone too far in exercising that right. So everything is very. So everything is very fact-specific. You can have a general policy, there're gonna be certain parameters, but I don't think the policy itself will sort of naturally extend to the, sort of the desired outcome that you've suggested. And that would apply whether, whether it's to, uh, an elected official who is a constitutional or among you who are also elected officials.
So the outcome that I, I request, I mean, I would like to see is, rather than to aggravate a situation, to diffuse it, that's the outcome that I'm looking for.
Right, but the, the example that you used would not, in, in cer- certain situations, uh, exasperate or incite or, you know, I can't remember, I'm sorry, the term that you used. But, you know, didn't, it wouldn't necessarily be something that would cause someone to think they didn't diffuse it. If I tell you to go and express your discontent, go pick it in front of the city hall. Go and, you know, show up at the city council meeting with placards and, you know, speak, you know, whatever it is. That, again, that's a fundamental element. And so you're gonna be looking at how far it's taken for there to be any agreement as to whether or not you, the person was incited or alternatively, the situation should have been diffused.
Um, Counselor Denton, you have the floor next, and I'd like to speak after you. Well, I'm sorry, I told Commissioner Reason, did you, it's, I have discretion to allow you to speak now. Do you, do you wanna comment now or do you wanna wait? In terms of what you were just saying to her, but not, not past that.
I would just think that if one-
You can speak in my school.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the county. Governor Reason, the Commissioner of Revenue for City of Hopewell. At one breath, I listened to what everyone's saying and it's like, you are a constitutional officer. In the other breath, I'm a city employee. I am one of neither. There is no hope or help in the city for constitutional officers in your human resources building. There is no help for a constitutional officer if you are stalked in the City of Hopewell by one of city council's employees. With that being said, there is a huge issue that needs to be handled in this city. Not just between me and the treasurer. This is a citywide problem that needs to be handled now before this city gets sued. And I think that learning to work together is one thing, but talking to people wrong is another. When you have so many people that go from one office, that tells me that it's not all one person. I wanna work with everyone. I want the cavers finished, I want my city back on track. I tried to help and I will continue to try to help. But it's gonna take all of y'all and all of these employees behind me. And with that being said, that's really the basics of what I have to say to this city now.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Counselor Denton, you had the floor, I'll speak after you.
Okay, I've, I'll go on really, uh, with the Commissioner just said. When you were telling, um, I'm addressing the city manager. When you were addressing what you were doing as far as safety procedures and where we're going, are you including our constitutional officers in this? We have five constitutional officers. Two are located in this building. Three are at the courthouse and one of them is a, um, police of our enforcer of the law. And so I, I did not worry too much about the courthouse. But are we including our constitutional officers in this building? In this, um, program we're trying to implement for safety?
The, the only constitutional office involved in the development of the procedures is the sheriff's office. All city departments inclusive of constitutional offices will be involved in the implementation and training of people. We're not, I don't view Mrs. Reason's office or, uh, the treasurer's office as not a, you know, they don't, they're constitutional officers, they don't follow the purview of the city manager, but they're in our building and they provide service to our city. And I view them as part of the city operation. So there, we will not exclude them, uh, while we're training everyone else how to be safe. We're not gonna ignore the fact that they're, they need to be trained also. And they'll be included because they're part of this building, they're part of what we do. So we will do that both here and over at the courthouse and in the other buildings that we have throughout the city. They'll all be involved, but we're not gonna exclude them from what we're doing. That would not be, that's counterproductive to what we're trying to accomplish.
Yeah, 'cause we're all on the same team.
Absolutely.
Like she said, we're all working for the city of Hopewell. And if you're trying to be safe for all of the employees and counselors and whoever, um, it should include everybody.
So it's my turn to speak then, Counselor Pelham. I'll say, um, to City Manager, unfortunately, this is something that happened to fall on you that shouldn't have, 'cause it was asked before you got here. There was an ask to do, make sure we had active shooter training about two years ago. Um, council was told at the time it had been implemented. But I think that you guys just really officially implemented now that you're here, correct?
Well, we haven't done any, we haven't conducted, say, uh, an active shooter drill. But we've sent out some, uh, a video on, to educate employees on how to, if that situation were to arise, methods in which you could address that. But we haven't done an active shooter training drill for the building. That's one of the things that is part of this discussion of what we wanna do.
Okay. Also, please remember that we have a telecommunications committee. That per, that committee is council, I think, Parton, I think you're on, or Vice Mayor Bennett's, between the two of them. Vice Mayor Bennett?
I think it's the two of you, Mayor and Vice Mayor.
Yes, I didn't know if it was between him or, um, that's about the technology fund. And I've been asking questions to figure out where, how that money gets funded. And there's supposed to specifically look at cameras and technology for the city. So when you have that group meeting, please keep the mind that we have to talk to you too before-
Yeah, no, I actually sent y'all an email today.
Oh, about telecommunications? Yes, thank you. Sorry, I didn't see it. And then the other thing I would say, um, two points to, again, this was on the pending list. The pending list seems to be the devil for council. So the pending list had a disaster relief, not, not disaster relief, well, emergency situation. But I, I forgot the name of the document at this point, 'cause it's been so long. Um, I think it's EOC or EOP or some type of document that comes from our, um, emergency management team. The ask was for it to be on the city's website so people can know what the proper process is in case there's a city emergency. The other thing was establish clear lines of communication. I know this is kinda off, but it's kinda similar to the same, 'cause if there is a city dis- emergency regarding something that happens in our place from a shooting or something like that, we need to have that plan ironed out. Because it was very unclear when we had some recent events, who was supposed to inform council of what or when. Um, you guys did a good job, but it was, there's nothing still in writing that has been updated as of lately. And that was on the pending list, and I think the clerk can pull. I'll look for and pull and give it to you guys. Social media policy that was touched on, City Manager's correct. The website, ad hoc committee addressed this. Again, this is about a two-year-old project. It is on the pending list for council to adopt. Um, Mr. Bragg has been the point person for that. The draft has been vetted by the former city attorney, so it needs to go to Ms. Robinson. But it's been on the agenda for council to discuss and approve for about a year and a half now. And that stemmed from honestly, the behavior of some members of council on social media as it related to, um, how they're treating other members of council. I'll just leave it as that. So, and then we need to extend it to concerns with staff and their interactions with people. To Commissioner Reason, I'll also let the treasurer speak. She has something that she wants to say. In terms of harassment, the incident you spoke of, I spoke to you personally about that when I found out about it. That, and as you know, that incident did not come to council when it should have. We found out about it well into, after you were making complaints, I guess, expecting or thinking that it had rose to us. So that should never happen. When you were dealing with that, it should've came directly to council. Now we have a new leadership team in place, so, and you know, you come straight to us if there's anything that, that occurs. But we were, the instance you just spoke of now, earlier, the stalking, that should've, this should've never happened.
There was a resolution done after the fact, after everybody on council knew. To his family, that I sat here and listened to, instead of walk, walk.
I wasn't the mayor at the time, resolutions are approved by the mayor.
Everybody that was in council that, at that time, knew what was going on. But he was never, nothing ever happened.
You're correct, and again-
No, no, it's not the place for us to do-
And we're, we're getting off topic, but you're correct. And I would say to you, to your point, nothing ever happened, you are correct. Majority didn't wanna do anything at times. So I'm making your point that something needs to happen in, in terms of workplace safety. Um, Counselor, do you have something, Counselor Randolph? It's like you're whispering, it's disturbing. Do you have something you wanna ask?
I was answering her question.
Excuse me.
So, do you have a point order?
No. If you finish, I'll let you make your comment.
So work, for in terms of workplace safety, I agree with you. Um, we have issues of there being hostile work environments in the city. Um, I personally was, I was put out there, I was sexually harassed by a member of council a couple of years ago. I went to city attorney about that, nothing happened. So I understand when you're talking about that there needs to be a change here. There, there's no action for anything. And I applaud the Vice Mayor for seeking some type of policy or procedure for mediation or support, because it needs to happen. Um, it's pretty much sweeps things under the rug and acts like it doesn't happen or exist here. Um, but that's changing. Um, we have a new council, we have people who actually wanna do something about it. Unfortunately, with this incident, the issue at hand that we were supposed to be talking about is just the barring part. And I guess that's more of a legal matter. But in terms of the other concerns between both offices, we need to find a way to find a resolution. I have to have an investment committee with both the treasurer and you that we have postponed. So we had to find a way to come together and have that discussion. Um, but in general, I wanna support the Vice Mayor's request to look at some things that we can do as a city to look at support for, um, constitutional officers and employees overall. Um, and it needs to happen in general, 'cause we have a lot of stuff that's happening, especially on social media. Things have gotten really ugly on Facebook unnecessarily and it creates a bad environment. I know personally, I'm subject to it. I s- I kinda stopped looking at certain groups on social media and some other things because people are just downright nasty for no reason. They get brave behind the computer, but they don't say nothing, they don't come here. But, um, so I would say that, um, if there's a way that council can look at maybe our perform- again, our performance review team that we have, we have funding for them. An element of the performance review, we're supposed to do employee satisfaction survey to ask questions. I need to double check if we have that done for this first wave. If not, we should probably put on the agenda, it's on the agenda to talk about them, but maybe change it to look at if that is included. And if not, how we can do a separate review. And Mr. City Manager, I think when we first talked with them, didn't they have it priced out separately? So maybe come back and address maybe how we can do some type of evaluation to survey in, in advance. Because it was on the thing, listed things to do, but I don't think we included it this time. But it was something that council asked to get coded because we wanted to do it. So there is an option there and that should be for everyone at city hall if council supports it at the next meeting. Um, and I, as I said before, I let the treasurer speak, um, just to have equal opportunity. If you want to, if you don't have to, if you don't want to, if you wanna come later, you can. You don't want to, okay. Counselor Pelham?
Yeah, well, just in particular that situation is that somewhere in between all of that and when, even though a city employee of ours, you have individual rights where you can file a complaint. Stalking is a little different to me than trying to ban someone from your office. Stalking happened with the old, another employee of the council. So individually, sitting down and making out a complaint to let the police department do an investigation to charge that person, you could've easily done that. And, uh, I, I, I don't really need a response, but something is individual. If, if, because if, if he say he's not doing it and you say he is, that's where police get involved so that they can do the appropriate investigation. And so then if he was found guilty, you go to the magistrate. Or the, the police officer would've gone to the magistrate and filed a complaint against him. You've been in court and, no, I don't wanna respond, I'm just giving my, uh, we're not gonna talk about, I hope we don't. But I'm just saying, as, as individual, you have a right to do that. If you don't do that, that's, that's up to you.
I'll just say before it moves, no, I, I will say for the moment, I know that she did file something.
Well, then, then, then-
She did file.
Personnel, police department, the state police.
She went to everybody.
Okay, I, I-
She did, it just didn't come back to us until at the end.
But then it's not our fault that he wasn't charged.
But we're gonna move on to the next thing. But just for the record, she did take the action she needed to take. She did.
We're so off course.
So we're going to move on, 'cause Counselor Parton has, no one has their lights on. Is there any action that council's asking to take besides the recommendation that the Vice Mayor made? Do you wanna make a motion, Vice Mayor Bennett, to look at a po- ask for there to be a review of some policy to support employees and then also to move forward with looking at, uh, employee satisfaction surveys?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Yeah, true.
Second.
Mayor Gore, could you please restate that motion?
Do you wanna do it? Do you wanna restate it? The motion is for staff to look into alter- options or to re- help remedy situations that are, um, for employee satisfaction, um, safety, um, mediation, resources. What?
Yeah, that didn't make any sense.
What? I know, I stopped because you weren't speaking to me. The motion was, the first one I made, I'm just gonna have to remember, 'cause I already said it, is to look at, have staff look at resources to add to, I guess, our HR department to better support constitutional officers and staff, um, when it comes to some of the issues that were addressed tonight. And then also to support moving forward with a performance review, not performance, an employee satisfaction survey of everyone occupying city hall.
An employee satisfaction review and what?
More like a climate, survey, I meant survey. Employee- Okay, climates, climate, but the term that they use is employee satisfaction.
Okay.
But was parentheses, climate survey. It's not supposed to be a review, I caught myself.
Mayor Gore, you seconded that motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Who made the first one?
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Discussion.
One second, do you have the motion?
Staff to look at resources to add to HR to better support constitutional offices and staff to address issues that were addressed tonight and to move forward with employee satisfaction, parenthetical climate survey.
Okay, is there a discussion?
What happened to them?
How many times have we spoken?
This is a motion. I don't know, you just made a motion.
I'm asking the clerk.
What happened?
What, can you tell me the, the number of people that speaks?
I've spoken twice, but it went on this motion.
It's still part of the discussion. Relate to the item, it is. You can ask for a point of order, but-
I am.
Can you tell me the tally again? For the workforce policy, SB two, the tally of who has spoken?
For SB two, Counselor Randolph has spoken, Counselor Pelham has spoken, Vice Mayor Bennett has spoken, Counselor Denton has spoken, Mayor Gore has spoken. Counselor Pelham spoke twice.
I did, but there was no motion on the floor. Is that different, Madam Attorney? If it is, I won't say anything, but-
No, your, your rules go to the item.
Not to the motion.
I mean, yeah, the motion, if it's properly made, is a part of the discussion, would also be combined. But you started talking about the item without a motion, and so it's the item.
Was that appropriate?
It's, uh, it's unconventional under Robert, Robert's rules. But I mean, it can be done right now, it's just everything is a little bit, you know, a little bit off.
So I'll make a motion to end discussion. So I'll make a motion to end discussion, do we move on with roll call, please?
Counselor Holloway? Counselor Parton?
Yes.
Mayor Gore?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Do you need her to repeat the motion? I'm sorry, Denton, you want to hear her repeat the motion? Do you need her to repeat the motion, Counselor Denton?
No.
She said yes.
You're okay with it?
Counselor Pelham?
Nope.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Can you repeat that?
For staff to look at resources. Counselor Randolph?
Yeah.
Motion passes six one.
Okay, now we are on the remote participation policy. The issue is General Assembly provides for authorized members of the public body to participate in open means for remote location. Not open to the public through electronic means for city council to be able to utilize remote electronic participation. It has to be adopted with a written remote participation policy. Based on the emails, Counselor Randolph, I'm not sure this goes to you or Counselor Denton.
It's not mine, it was the, it was the city attorney, and I think in conjunction with. Counselor Denton.
With me. Okay, go ahead. Do you want to say something about it?
Sure, sure. We have, at times, council members have not been able to be here for various reasons. Travel, illness, um, for different things. And we cannot participate at all in the council meetings. Unfortunately, I'm thinking that we meet every second and fourth Tuesday night of the month. June, July, and August, we have one meeting, and it was agreed back in January that we would keep the two and four. Well, just chalk it up to old age. My daughter called me and said that she um, would like to meet me and my family in Maine. I said the third, either the first or the third week. So we made plans months ago for the third week in August, thinking it would not conflict with anything. Um, it wasn't until about a week, about two weeks ago, I went in to see our city attorney, and I told her I guess I had really pulled a boo-boo, I planned a vacation on the third week of the month, which normally would be okay. And she suggested that there was a a law by the General Assembly that if council would approve, counselors could still take part in that meeting. And I'm gonna ask her to kind of explain that, because I thought maybe it was an answer to my problem where I could still be a part of the meeting, representing the people in my ward, and not be here. Um, thank you, Madam Counselor, yes. As you indicated, um, it's when members of a local governing body or a board may have to participate from a a remote location, because they cannot be present where the meeting is actually taking place. Under normal circumstances, it is prohibited for a member to call in and participate in a meeting via, call in via telephone, or participate by Skype, or some other kind of electronic means. The General Assembly has carved out an exception to that prohibition, and a condition of being able to take advantage of that exception is that there has to already be in place a written policy by that board or commission before a member can exercise their right to participate remotely via telephone, via Skype. The condition of the written policy is just one of those conditions. And then there are uh, conditions that are imposed on the locality, the 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 city council in order for that to be fully implemented. One of those would be to make sure that there is a quorum in place here in the meeting place at the time a member calls in, that's condition number one. And the other condition i- is to make sure that individuals who are here attending the public meeting can actually hear the member who's at a remote location if he or she decides to participate in the discussion and or vote. So those are two of the conditions that must be in place. It's not a ca- um, an opportunity or a right that can be exercised regularly. It's limited to three times per calendar year, and there is an approval process that is required in advance of that meeting, and it usually goes through the presiding chair, and in this case, that's the mayor. So all the other conditions but uh, of the statute will have to be reviewed and deemed satisfied by the mayor before permission is given. But sort of the fundamental uh, piece to have in place is the written policy, and it is a good policy and it's advisable for every board or commission and council.
I'll just advise counsel that, and I'm not trying to be funny, but every chance I get, I will remind us. This is on the pending list as well, it's called our electronic meeting policy that we haven't gotten to, so count, Madam Clerk, please check off everything they were talking about, that's on our pending list, so that way we can make an annotation for the next agenda packet, it is on there.
I was saying, pending list is.
It's on the pending list, you make an annotation if we talked about it tonight. Are you finished with that? So you could, so Counselor Pelham?
So really, this, it, there's no written policy, so this really not going to benefit her going away, correct? Because we don't have a policy.
Well, you're, the, it's before the board or the council, excuse me, tonight for consideration and adoption. So if you adopt the policy tonight, it will be in place for her to participate next me- uh, on the August twenty meeting.
And how do, well, only only issue I have with it is that, just like we had an issue tonight with the communications, I think somehow before that, we need to test to make sure, uh, before we implement the policy that that medium will be able to be used. I mean, if someone calls in from afar, we don't know what the technical, technicalities is going to happen, I don't know.
Well, that may be a different consideration, the policy can be adopted, and you deal with the sort of the logistics of following through the code, but you still have to have something in place to just sort of justify testing whether logistically this is going to work. Just as an example, y- you know, my last board, someone called in and somebody, you know, just to make sure that the voice was clearly audible, put their cellphone up to a microphone.
And it worked.
And it worked well enough for everyone to hear it, so it's not that, it's not that complicated really, but you you really don't get a chance to test it out without the policy being in place.
Is IT still here? I just got a message that there's no sound on Council Live right now, ironically. Thank you. Counselor Parton?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the electronic participation policy and resolution that's before us.
Second.
Discussion? No one has their lights on, um, I'll just ask that we use the twentieth meeting to test it out, because we tried to an interactive meeting with the financial team, that we had two different presenters come and tried to do Skype with them. We couldn't do it twice, and IT's been in here working on certain things. And so we have a really packed agenda for the next meeting, we got an email to try to skim it down today. I think that we should test it out to make sure it's working before we commit to doing it, so I can support it if it's like test it on the twentieth, to make sure everything is working, and like I said, I just got a message about Council Live, so we got too many different variables.
That amended motion.
I can't make amended motion.
I mean, the onus is on the counselor, to make sure that it's.
Counselor Parton, I did, hit your light. Well, Director Reed Miller just texted me, he said that he can hear. So maybe on some computers it's low, okay, he said we can hear. Mr. Altma can message Mr. Reed Miller. Counselor Pelham, did you want to make an amended motion, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Make amended motion that we use that meeting as a a testing ground while she's away, and if it works, then we'll come back and approve the policy for.
She cannot participate to test it without the policy being in place, I mean.
Okay, that's fine, I withdraw that. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Counselor Parton, you want to speak?
I mean, all I was going to say is that, you know, the onus is on her to make sure that the logistics are taken care of so she can participate.
Actually, IT, that's, I'm not talking about the person calling, I'm talking about the equipment itself. We just had issues with microphones today, we had issues with the.
Point of order.
Anyone that's missing. That's what I'm trying to say, the onus is on them.
The city attorney has read what the law says. That's all that matters to whether or not we approve or disapprove of this, and whether or not we put it in place.
So what's your point of order, it's a legal question, so not a statement.
Instead of you all going back and forth, let's listen again to what the city attorney has said that we need to do in order to make the motion and move on.
So just for clarification, point of orders are legal questions, not statements or direction. So if you want to ask the city attorney to give us more direction, she can do that.
I have to ask you for the point of order, so I'm asking you to allow me to ask her to read that and give her opinion, please.
I I I just wanted to correct the record, um, Counselor Parton has indicated in discussion that it's, the onus is on the absent counselor, but that's not what the statute imposes. And it's in our policy, the policy really tracks the statute, and the onus is on the clerk, and that's the, how it's written, the mayor, the slash clerk, to make sure that the absent person is audible. And it can be done as simply as a telephone call, and someone holding up a phone to a microphone, or if there's a desktop, to put that person on conference call, it doesn't have to be Skype or anything along those lines. But it's just the one provision, we're using electronic means, is being permitted. And the person who's using it will be able to vote, and that's not normally the case.
May I say something? I think this will make this super easy, Counselor Denton. Between now and the twentieth, you can call me and I'll come up here, and we'll te- we'll test the equipment with nobody in here. Obviously utilizing IT as well, so that by the time the twentieth rolls around, we'd be good to go.
That's all I was asking.
I think that'll work better for everyone.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Is everyone aware of the motion on the floor? Counselor Holloway? Counselor Parton?
Yes.
Mayor Gore?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Pelham?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett? Counselor Randolph?
Yes.
Motion passes seven oh.
SB four, litigation item, if any, and I'll refer to Counsel Randolph.
We already did this in the beginning. Yeah, this is, this wasn't mine either, this was the city attorney's. And the city manager, they presented in the back, and we made the motion and passed it before the meeting started, or at, just as the meeting started, thank you.
Okay, so SB four is regarding the closed session motion that was made by Counselor Parton. All right, that's the end of our meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you guys for coming out.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Ayes have it, good night.
We still have time, we're good for a run.